Oh, sit down, sir. Got a page just you have on the hall. Here we go. There's Doctor.
I'd like to call the City Council Meeting of October 1st, 2020 to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Here.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Woods?
Here.
Alderman Sosmarski? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Okay.
Hey, Doc. Mayor, please.
I'm here. I declare a quorum. Please stand and join pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I need a motion to approve the minutes of September 17, 2020?
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions, comments, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda? Okay, I have no written communicate. Under Mayor's report, I'm only going to make one simple announcement. For those that want to know about trick or treat guidelines, the city will be posting something tomorrow. And that concludes my report. Mr. Mermis.
Two quick items for residents at home. We will be having a shredding event at City Hall on Saturday, October 3rd, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Additionally, the city is currently in the process of switching its utility billing software. As part of the changeover in the next few months, residents should be receiving a new-looking utility bill. More information will be sent out in an upcoming newsletter as we work out the details on that transition period. That concludes my report.
Thank you. If no objections, we have two items on the consent agenda. I entertain a motion.
I make the motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
An objection? I was going to make, I think I know what you're going to ask. How much money are we saving on the bond? Oh, okay. Because I was gonna, I was gonna s-
I was thinking that whole column.
Okay. Alright, so we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Next, I need a motion to approve the two items on the agenda. An ordinance authorizing and providing for the issuance not to exceed 7,400,000 aggregate principal amount general obligation bonds. Alternate revenue source. Series 2020B of the City of Wood Dale, DuPage County, Illinois, for the refunding of certain outstanding obligations of the city and for the levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds. Item two, an ordinance amending the City Code, Chapter 8, Article 7, regarding hotel motel transient occupancy rental units and related matters. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
And that passes. And just so, for the residents at home, the seven, 7.4 million dollar bond is to replace the treatment plan bond that we had. We had the opportunity to save approximately just over 300,000. And the remaining 7.4 million dollars, so naturally, we're always looking to save money. Next, committee chairman reports planning and zoning. Alderman Jacob.
Two reports. An ordinance approving the annexation from R1 to R4 for the property 6N 204 Ash Street, which will be known as 420 North Ash Street, case number CDC 2020-06. That is my motion.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any questions on this? Roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
That passes.
Okay, next, an ordinance approving the rezoning from R1 to R4 for the property 6N 204 Ash Street, which will be known as 420 North Ash Street, case number CDC-2020-06. That is my motion.
Second.
Questions on this one? Roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
And that passes. And that concludes your report?
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Public Health and Safety, Alderman Sorrentino?
No report this evening, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works, Alderman Catalano?
I have four, Mayor. First one is a resolution approving the amendment number two to the agreement with H.R. Green, Inc., for the Irvin Park and Wood Dale Road intersection. Improvement project in the amount not to exceed 81,125 dollars and 93 cents, and that is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Wesley, go ahead with the question.
My question is, is this the final on the parking lot?
Mr. Lane?
Thank you, Mayor. This would be the final amendment to the contract with H.R. Green for that project that we anticipate. There were some overages and some additional work on that project, which H.R. Green acted on our behalf, that led to some, some overage in the contract. The final payment to the contractor is still forthcoming.
Follow-up? Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
So is this coming out of the grant money that we got to redo that intersection? Or is this our money there?
Mr. Wesley? Sorry, Mr. Wilson. Do you know the-
You know what I'm saying?
I, I would think it's ours. Because, well, the grant money was part of the project, but-
Right.
Any additional was ours.
Right, yeah. That is correct. This would be mostly our, our contribution.
Any other questions? Alderman Woods, go ahead.
How come it's so far past the project that we're approving this?
Who's going to take that one? Mr. Mermis or Mr. Lane?
I can answer. There was some delays on the part of the contractor in closing out this project. A few punchless items that were left well beyond the final completion date. Unfortunately, as this is an IDOT project, we don't have any authority to withhold any liquidated damages. And there was also several additional work items that were outside of the original scope of the agreement that are included in this also.
Alright, thank you. Anything else? Roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Abstain.
Okay, abstain. That passes. Next?
Next is approval of the final payment to A-Lamp Concrete Contractors, Inc., for the Delwood Avenue and Gilbert Drive Storm Sue Improvement Project in the amount not to exceed 312,227 dollars and 47 cents, and that is my motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. Questions on this? Alderman Wesley, go ahead.
So, is that dollar amount taking out the liquidated damage that the staff recommended?
Mr. Lane, go ahead.
So the dollar amount that you see in the subject line of the memo, and in Robinson's attached memo also, that is the final total contract value remaining. So whatever we decide, is decided by the council to withhold in liquidated damages would be deducted from that amount. And for this project, there is, it is reasonable, in Robinson's opinion, that we would withhold $10,000 in liquidated damages due to the delays in substantial completion on the part of the contractor.
Follow-up? Okay, I'll go to Alderman Sorrentino where you're looking. I'll come back to you, okay? You have your hand up?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Our engineer and our staff came up with the 10,000, right? Is that where we came up with that?
It came from Robinson's-
Hold on, wait. So based on, based on an evaluation of the field notes from Robinson, that is what they believe would be substantially supported for liquidated damages to this project.
And the attorney, Mr. Bond?
Yeah, and I had an opportunity, Robinson Engineering had done a, an analysis with the, with the project, and I've reviewed that in connection with the contract, and I concur that that is the appropriate liquidated damage amount to deduct.
Any other questions? Alderman Woods, go ahead.
So just so that we cover it all. So one portion is substantial completion and the other portion, final completion. So we're saying that between the two, the only thing that we can justify or is fair is the $10,000 in that contract? Is that fair statement?
Mr. Bond, go ahead.
Yeah, and there were some of, and Robinson's here if they, they wish to, but there were some issues that were beyond the contractor's control, and you know, with the relocation of Nycor, there were some ComEd issues that, you know, we all have dealt with, both of those entities. And if somebody in this room is able to control them, they should share how, what their secret is, so. So those were, that's the reason. And there's, the contract has two, as you're well aware. The contract had two dates, two thresholds, one being the substantial completion and the other is the final completion, which means that there's few things that are still outstanding that, that need to be done, but the two dates are there so that there's a progress of the, of the project. And also, there is an incentive for the contractor to comply with those, those timeframes.
Follow-up, go ahead, Alderman Woods.
Yeah, just more comment, because just from the, the resident facing, it appeared, not appeared, that, that the contractor was missing for a, an extended period of time. And so when we look at this and go through it, anybody watching on TV is going to go, wait a second, these guys just disappeared. So I get it when you go through the pieces and add the other part, because the, the project was bifurcated into Gilbert plus Dalewood. So when they're working on Gilbert, nobody knows that on Dalewood, and when they're on Dalewood, nobody knew on Gilbert that they were working. So as we're going through the, the streets manual, and we were talking about the contract and kind of tightening up some of that language so that this doesn't happen, because I truly believe that there could have been a better approach to keeping them to them, although you can't guarantee that you're going to force the contractor there. And I know staff called on numerous occasions trying to get them out and do stuff. I'm, I'm just saying, and speaking on behalf of the residents, that it, it really looked bad. And when you read this report, you know, it sounds like they did everything they can do. So we, we need to do a better job contractually getting those two things to meet a little better. That's all I wanted to do.
I just had a comment regarding the engineering standards. So I think we had that discussion and said, what happens when a contractor walks away for six weeks? I think it was six weeks on this project, I had heard. And is there anything we can do legally? And I, I don't know, do we have the conversation with Mr. Bond yet? And I don't want to get into engineering standards tonight, but-
Right.
Something, you know.
We're not going to get into it tonight, but I, I did have a couple of conversations offline. I know there's still some input pending from the last committee meeting. Hence why it's not on the agenda this evening. So we've got a little bit more time to vet out some of these details with the attorney and some of the electeds that, that had some comments. So it probably won't be coming for adoption at the council level for another few weeks.
And, you know, honestly, if we can't do anything, then maybe when they give us their timelines, we just cut it by 10 days and we'll take care of that problem. Put a little pressure on them. Alright, anything further on this one?
No.
Roll call, please.
Mayor, if I could?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Lane.
So the, the motion would be, if you're deciding to withhold 10,000 liquidated damages, the motion would be for the final payment in the amount of 302,227 dollars and 47 cents.
Oh, the 10,000's not taken out of that?
Correct.
I asked.
Okay. So let's see. Alderman Catalano, you made the motion?
Yes, I, I concur, yes.
Alderman Sorrentino, second?
I concur.
Okay. So we're good. Roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Hold on one second.
What is the new thing?
Take 10,000. 302,000, minus 10.
302,227 dollars and 47 cents.
Okay, go ahead.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
And that passes.
Next is approval of the final payment, A-Lamp Concrete Contractors, Inc., for the, for the fiscal year ended in 2019 road program in the amount not to exceed 54,378 dollars and 35 cents. That is my motion.
Second. A motion and a second. Questions on this one? Alderman Wesley, go ahead.
Is there a punch list on this, or is it completed?
Mr. Lane?
Thank you, Mayor. All punchless items have been completed for this project.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Nope.
Roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
And that passes.
And the next, last one, I should say, is approval of the final payment of A-Lamp Concrete Contractors, Inc., for the Squaw Creek Improvement Project in the amount not to exceed 168,888 dollars and 40 cents, and that is my motion.
Second. Do we have a second? Alderman Messina. Any questions on this one? Alderman Woods, go ahead.
Just a quick question, because this one seems, this payment seems to be lagging also from the completion of Squaw Creek. So we've been holding this for, I don't know, a year?
Mr. Lane?
A lot of the time was actually waiting on them to submit the, the final invoice for it, which we've only gotten recently.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Kel?
No, Director's got a question on that.
If I could just clarify the potential liquidated damages on this project?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. So the final, the final amount that you see here, there is another case for liquidated damages to be assessed to the substantial completion date in the amount of $9,000, which could be justified. There is a case to be made additionally for liquidated damages to the final completion date in the amount of $30,000, and that is slightly less clear as the final completion date was, the work that took place after that date was largely fencing and head rail, head wall railing items, which due to some changes, and those on the part of the city led to delays in ordering the materials and having those installed.
Mayor.
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
No, I'll start first.
Go ahead, Alderman Woods.
So you're saying the, the $30,000, which is less clear, is based on the, the head wall and the head wall railing and the fencing in the rear, or those the-
Correct, on the western, western limits of the project, correct.
Follow-up, go ahead.
Yeah, so what, what, what is it, what isn't clear? What, what the staff or the engineers or whoever is-
If it's alright with you, I would defer to, thank you, Mayor, to Robinson Engineering. I understand they have a better idea.
Who's going to take that?
Mark, if you want, Mike.
Good.
It'd just be helpful to understand when you say it's not clear, what that really means so that we can make a decision.
Sure, Alderman Woods. Basically, the, the city added some additional fencing and head wall railings to the contract. That authorization for that extra work wasn't approved by the council until May 23rd for the head wall railings, and then May 29th for the additional fencing, the chain link fencing. They also increased the length, they doubled the length of the Trex fencing along Miller. So based on, based on the timing of that, that came actually after the final completion date of the contract. And as part of those agreed unit prices that were approved, there was, there was never, I guess it may have been an oversight, but there was never an extension to the contract at that time. There was a timely, you know, there's a time period for them to order the materials, get the contractor in place to install them, and that was the bulk of the delay relative between the final completion of the actual project and the installation of all the railings and fences.
Follow-up?
Yeah, so on the, the head wall railings, that really never changed, right? That, that was part of the project. We didn't change it.
There was actually the, the head wall railings, because they, they were not part of the original contract, because we weren't sure at the time of the design what railings were going to be put on there. So we were going back and forth with the city.
Oh, that's right.
Finally came, came to some agreement on what, what the city wanted and what to be provided on.
I do now remember that conversation, that there was not going to be a railing there, yep. So-
Do you have follow-up? Go ahead, Alderman.
Yeah, and so in your estimation, the, how much of the 30,000? So you're saying it's unclear, but it's unclear for the whole 30,000, or it would be fair?
Well, the-
20,000, 15,000, 2,000?
The project was substantially complete, with the exception of the fencing. So they had, they had all the, all the creek work done, all the concrete work, any paving. Restoration was all done by the, prior to that final completion date.
And could it- Go ahead.
Yeah, I just, so is staff agree or concur that that's a fair?
I think they're only agreeing to the 9,000 is what staff is agreeing to, the original 9,000.
Yes.
And nothing from the 30,000.
Well, the 9,000 could be reasonably justified. There's, there's no question on staff's end about that. I do agree with, with Mark's estimation of the, the timeline there of the work that was left after the final completion date was limited to the, the fencing and the head wall railing. I understand the hesitation due to the prolonged condition of the, the parkways being subpar out there. However, those items are covered under the, the warranty and maintenance period.
Right.
And we continue to try to get them to address those issues even up to and including this week.
Mr. Bond?
Yeah, and the problem, we, I think you guys are probably more familiar with liquidated damages than most city councils, but in, in there, you know, if the contractor had made a request to extend it or, or, you know, additional time based on that, that additional work with the head wall railings, it likely would have come for you and would have been approved. So procedurally, they should have, but liquidated damages are designed to, technically, to hold a contractor to a particular date for completion of the terms and conditions of that contract. And to the extent there were other things that were outside of that that needed to be done, it would be tough to justify, legally to justify that, that additional money. So if I can-
Go ahead, Alderman Woods.
Yeah, so I agree. The reason I'm even asking and bringing this up is because, again, we're, we're creating this manual and this, this was an issue. So, good point, Mr. Bond, that they, they could have asked for time and, but they didn't. But I'm going to go to, they didn't, right? So six months removed or one year removed, most of these questions I'm only asking because this was done a year ago, right? And, and so now we're, so if I, if I look back and, and remember, I do remember the conversations, because I did have a conversation with Robinson, that there was no official railing on the head wall, which didn't make sense, because it's about 18 inches off a sidewalk. So somebody walking or tripping, they're going to fall three feet into the creek. That didn't make any sense, whether, however, we got to that situation. So I, I get it, and the fence, we did, and, and I did argue to extend the fence and change the fence from a chain link fence to the Trex fence, which should be a standard given the same scenarios and should be in the manual. So the biggest reason I bring up some of these things is because we're discussing it and what we're going to do in the manual, and these things tend to keep popping up. And so we have to make a decision. We're either going to create a rule and follow the rule, or we might as well not have the manual at all. So next time, they don't ask for the time. A year after the fact's not the time to consider giving them time, in my opinion. Thank you.
Alderman Wesley, go ahead.
So, my question to you guys is a punch list done on this project?
Mr. Lane?
I believe all of the punch list items have been addressed, but as I said, we are continuing to try to get them out there to address the condition of the parkway.
But that's, that's a separate project, though. Dale, that's the Dalewood project, Squaw Creek.
Correct. There, there is some, some dead sod along, that was part of the-
Two different projects.
Project also, which still needs to be addressed.
So, again, Saw Creek, and I understand it's a separate project, Mayor, but there's still punch list, there's still sod that needs to be replaced there. Okay, so that, that is my main concern. If it ain't done right, so why are we even giving them any money to less say, address that issue? I, I'm just saying that I know it's a separate project, but there's still punchless items that aren't done with this. But we're going to give them the final payment of a hundred, whatever it comes out to be. To my book, I don't think it's right. Just like me not finishing a project or punchless, I thought, I should be paying until the punch list is completely done. I'm sorry.
That should have been brought up during the Dalewood-Gilbert, where we did the 302,000.
No, Mayor. If I could, Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Lane.
They both fall kind of under the same category, where, as the work was completed, however, it didn't make it through the establishment period, so now it is covered by a warranty in the maintenance bond that the contractor provided.
Are we talking about sod for the Squaw Creek?
And both the, the parkways for Dalewood also.
That's what I was going to bring up, so, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
So how does Saw, Saw Creek fall under maintenance bond now? Is it just because of sod? Or is there other punchless items that is not completed yet on this?
To my recollection, no, there are no other punchless items that need to be completed.
Does the sod?
Right.
And it falls under maintenance?
Correct. The sod was laid, it did not survive through establishment, so we are requiring them to come back out and fulfill the obligation of their warranty and replace the sod.
Mr. Bond? And we've done it on other projects. You have trees, they plant the trees, and the trees don't make it through the winter or whatever, and that's the whole purpose. That's the reason you have that, for that, for that component of it. So the, the city's got coverage for that particular, those items, to make sure the sod doesn't-
Yeah, but Squaw Creek was two years ago, wasn't it?
Right.
So are we still covered?
The two-year guarantee and maintenance period for Squaw Creek begin, began on September 6th of 2019, so we are covered until the same date of 2021.
Okay. Follow-up? Alderman Wesley?
Then what?
Okay, so, so now we need to make the motion, adjust the motion to 159,888 dollars and 40 cents? Is that correct?
Yes. If that is the council's decision to withhold the 9,000, correct.
Well, we'd like to hold 39,000, so.
That's the, the decision of the council.
But only if that's the, the fair amount, all, all things-
Right.
Considered. If you're telling, that's why I'm asking. So if you're telling me we can really only reasonably justify the 9,000 because of a lot of the things that happened there? I, I don't want to take out another thousand and, and spend 20,000 on Pat defending this back and forth.
Correct.
Go ahead, Mr. Lane.
Nothing against Pat.
In the opinion of Robinson, and staff concurs with the opinion, it is reasonably justified to withhold those 9,000. The case, in our opinion, for the 30,000, it, it could go either way. So I, it's up to the council's decision and at the advice of Attorney Bond, perhaps, as to whether you want to withhold those, those amounts or not.
Mr. Bond? Oh, sorry, it's Mayor.
Mr. Bond?
Yeah, as I indicated, you know, liquidated damages are designed to make the contractor comply with the, the terms of the contract. If you've added additional clarification or, such as the, as when we're talking about the, the head wall railing, that would be the contractor's defense to that withholding liquidated damages. We'd likely get sued and the contractors, for 30,000, that's worth fighting about. And the contractor's position in that regard would be that this was a, this was a, a request on the city's part. And so that, because of that, it delayed the project. And while we didn't ask for an extension, this was not something that was reasonably foreseeable at the commencement of the project, and it's not fair. And it's, again, you can't have a, you can't punish in, under contracts in Illinois law, but it is designed, liquidated damages are designed to ensure contract compliance. And I think they have a fairly strong- And I think they have a fairly strong argument. We've, we've prevailed on every liquidated damage item that we've had so far, in addition to ones that have actually resulted in, in litigation. So, you know, I, I've got a great deal of familiarity with the way the courts view liquidated damages. And I think that, I don't think there's any question with the 9,000. I think you start getting into a gray area, and I appreciate the opportunity to represent the, the city. I don't know that that's a wise move when, you know, at, at risk is that not only paying the, the, the sums, but also paying the 30,000 if we withhold that liquidated damages, but also possibly be in assessed attorney's fees for, for withholding that. So I don't recommend that you withhold that amount.
Okay, so we're doing the 9,000. Unless I'm hearing some, Alderman Wesley?
I just have a thought. So how much is on the maintenance bond for the, the? Do you have that or no?
Go ahead.
The maintenance bond is for $80,149.83, so 10% of the contract, final contract.
So 8,000, so.
Eighty-nine.
Eight, zero.
Okay. Eighty-nine?
Eight.
Eighty thousand?
Oh, eighty.
Eighty.
Okay.
Mr. Mann, can, can you?
All right, thank you.
Another question? Alderman Woods, go ahead.
Yeah. So we're on the maintenance bond. Are we fairly sure that we'll actually get the grass growing on Dalewood under this program?
Good. Not going to take them. Go ahead.
That, that is certainly the plan, and we've been in contact with ALAM over the past, we talked, they reseeded this spring, didn't germinate as well as we had hoped. The plan was for them to come back out this fall and reseed again. They couldn't do it over the summer, that's not the growing season. Now is the time. So we've been in contact with ALAM over the past week or two to try to get them back out here on the site to kind of get rid of some of the weeds and, and reseed that for establishment this, this fall.
Okay. So they, we are trying to get them out this fall to, to do something?
Definitely, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Jacob?
Just two quick comments. Number one, I just want to make sure that, like Alderman Woods said, that if we're working on things that, for the future, we don't run into this problem, and we're not here next year talking about the same thing with another contractor. And number two, I just recently brought up the sod and the grass, and here we are again talking about that. So again, everything we're working on, I want to make sure that's all addressed in there. Thank you.
And he's talking about engineering standards, of course. So the, the new amount, Alderman Catalano would be?
Correct.
And Alderman Messina, you concur? You're the second.
Yes.
Okay.
I concur.
Roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
No.
And that's the end of my report, Mayor.
Finance Administration, Alderman Woods?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Under other business, airport noise, Alderman Jacob?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Under stormwater commission? Thank you, Alderman Wesley. Under list of bills for October 1st, 2020, $1,907,934, Alderman Woods?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the list of bills dated October 1st, 2020 in the amount of $1,907,934.8.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Questions?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yep. Unlucky for staff, I had a little extra time, so I have some, quite a bit of questions, I guess. Check number 11945. It is on the PDF 186. I think this might be Greg Dash Medical Gloves. So it says emergency services.
Page 186, you said?
Yeah, at least in my PDF. Check number 11945. So I see we have two cases of black Nitrile Exam Gloves for $385. Are those gold dipped?
Go ahead.
$385 for, is that, is that right?
Oh, yeah. That, that's, that's correct. We actually, is that, was that the one for Just Safety?
Dash Medical.
Oh, Dash Medical, yeah. So that's where we order our gloves from, and they, they have competitive price. And if you'd like me to look up some others, I could, but.
Yeah. I mean, then I looked at the other, sorry, Mayor, can I continue on that check? One case of True Comfort Neoprene Exam Gloves for $118. So I mean, how many, how many boxes are in a case? I guess it's a better question to start with.
Go ahead, Chief.
I think about 20 or so.
Okay.
And in each box, there's probably about 1,000 gloves, 500 or 1,000 depending, so.
And just so, just so everybody knows, I've dealt with some of these, and prices have more than, almost tripled on these things.
I wouldn't say tripled, but yes, they know they've gone up, but yeah. Nitrile and Neoprene have gone up, but I didn't think they'd gone up that much.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Go ahead.
The second question is check number 11967. And that is roll call newsletter under education and training, 11967. I don't know if that's Brad maybe, or Chief?
Chief, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, so we receive a monthly newsletter from, that's, that's distributed to all our people, and it covers all updates to law that occurred in the previous month. It's provided by the State, State appellate prosecutor, and it's actually a pretty cheap subscription compared to some of the other trainings that we do.
Follow up?
Yep, that's good. That's great.
No, no.
Follow up questions?
You have another question?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
Yep. Which is page 189. This might be for Ed maybe, reimbursement for I E P A letter, or maybe Director Lang?
Mr. Lane?
This was me. Zabo, Julie Zabo is our executive assistant. She was asked to mail a letter to the I E P A. Upon arriving at the post office, she realized her, her credit card wasn't working, so she had to pay out of her own pocket, and this is reimbursement for that.
Okay. So she had her city credit card.
She had her city credit card, but for whatever reason, it wasn't being accepted at the post office.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead.
And then the next question is 11989. That is?
BMO Harris?
Correct. So this is going to go into the P card, I believe? A couple concerning, I say concerning, I don't, I just want more information, more than anything. I think these are all Director Lang questions. So I saw a couple pairs of pants and a couple hoodies and shirts, but I see them at Lens, I see them at Walmart, I see them at Kohl's. I'm just trying to understand, I guess, is that a reimbursement or is that?
Go ahead, Mr. Lane.
It is, yeah. It's reimbursement for Public Works employees clothing allowance. They're, they're allowed to buy them anywhere. They have a, a budget that they have each year, and we don't put restrictions on where they can purchase.
Now, is it a reimbursement or are they leaving on city time to go to these places?
No.
Go ahead, Mr. Lane.
More often they buy this on their own time at places near their, their home. It sometimes is a reimbursement, although usually they use their P card.
Okay. And then in the spirit of, as everyone knows, consolidation of time, there's a, a charge in here for $8.97 at Lens for a toilet flange. So I did the due diligence of looking it up on Granger's website, Fastenal's website, Miller's website, and they all had it. So I'm just very curious on why somebody would go, we would send somebody to Lens, or they would feel like they were comfortable in going for an $8 product to Lens on city time, taxpayer time. So I just, was it a dire need to fix this toilet flange that we couldn't get it somewhere else and get it shipped?
If, if we have building maintenance repairs, especially at the R T A station, usually we will try to get those repaired as quickly as possible.
Was that for the R T A?
Granger sometimes doesn't have things in stock, so we don't want to wait, you know, with a toilet being out of service for two or three days.
Was that, was that at the R T A?
I, I'm not, a lot of our calls for toilet issues are at the R T A. I'm not certain if this particular one was. I can certainly find more information on it for you.
Alderman Messina, follow up?
I think in the spirit of, I have two more questions, but.
Go ahead.
Just, I know we've not had this conversation, but I guess I need to spend more time looking at these, drilling down, because that is probably the one thing that drives me crazy is total cost of procurement, right? And if I start looking at all these line items, you don't want that, because I will, because I will drill down. So I'm really hoping that it's a conversation with staff, that they understand that running around for $2 products on city time is not, not feasible, and if where there's opportunity to consolidate purchasing. We did this exercise five years ago, and I didn't dollarize them out, but I know we saved a ton of money. So where there's opportunity to consolidate, if we want to sit down, I'm happy to sit down like I did five years ago with the old director and work through that. Maybe we have agreements with certain vendors, but I just feel like we're slipping back. So, I mean, we can talk offline, but just, we haven't had this conversation in a couple of years, but if we can be more diligent, I just noticed this kind of starting to happen again. Mayor, I had just a couple more.
Go ahead.
On that same thing, there was, so that's the same example at Lens for $5 gloves. Amazon miscellaneous is the last one for $37.99. Does anybody have detail to what was on there?
How far down is it? What's the amount?
$37.99.
Wait, the refund for camera?
No, it says, it's, it's under miscellaneous. There is no categorization. It's, it's under vendor name. It's under the BMO Harris, under the P cards.
194 is the page, top first item on the page.
It could have been, I had ordered for Zoom meetings, a PC microphone slash speaker, so then I didn't have to dial in. And those are actually reimbursable expenses as well, so that's probably what that was for.
Okay. Is there a better way for us to categorize that in the future?
Again, I'm not sure. I'm guessing because I think it was around that price.
Okay. Can I get a copy of that invoice?
Sure.
Brad?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
You know which one we're talking about, right? Okay. Anymore?
That is it.
Any other questions?
Mayor.
Alderman Woods, go ahead.
Yeah, let me go back. I was following along with Mr. Messina there.
What page?
We are on page 187, check 11959 Huff and Huff Squaw Creek M, M, and M. Is that lawn maintenance? Is, do we have a separate? For $1,088.
That is the.
Go ahead, Mr. Lane.
Thank you, Mayor. The much famed scientist that is doing the maintenance on Squaw Creek, it is a three-year maintenance period that we're required to do from the Army Corps of Engineers. They perform, you know, vegetation control and things like that, monitoring, reporting to the Army Corps of Engineers for us.
And so it's the, thank you. So is this a, a monthly fee for a couple of years, or is this a quarterly thing, or when does this mysterious doctor come out and?
They, they do at least three, three visits a year, although I think they do more. They do at least three treatments, I know. I, I'm not sure, I don't think it's monthly, I think it's more quarterly, but I can get more information on that. And this is the second of the three-year period that we're required to have a qualified scientist monitor the site.
Okay. Yeah. And next one is same page, check number 11962, Flobotomy Services, $850.
They probably did some blood work. That is. Chief?
Yeah, so for any DUIs that we arrest, that we have to do a blood draw, there's a county-approved phlebotomy service that'll come out within an hour and do the draws actually here. And then what we do is we take that out of the DUI revenue, and then when they go to court, they're required to reimburse the city for those costs.
Okay. So is, is that like one?
It's two.
Or two? It's two? So it's.
$425.
$425. Nice. How do you get into that? Because that's, I'm available often and.
Get trained to be available 24 hours.
Yeah.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you.
I think Mr. Wilson has his question, an answer for us. Go ahead.
Yeah, I do, and I'm afraid unless perhaps Mr. Paploskas has an answer, it's going to lead to more questions. But the invoice, Alderman Messina was looking at the miscellaneous one. Chief was able to pull it up. It was actually for a, like a bingo cage. Can you roll around and pull the bingo letters out of?
Oh, is that what, for the, when we hold the events?
Hold the events, I guess, yeah. But that's what it was. It was a bingo colored cage.
That's to determine who goes for the toilet flange. Just a little levity.
That is. Thank you.
Alderman Jacob?
I have a few as well.
Go ahead.
11977, let's see, the page number is page, packet page 188. It's for $828, Soil and Material Consultants Street Improvement Program. What street were we improving here? Or what were we doing?
This was.
Go ahead, Mr. Lane.
Thank you, Mayor. This was part of the Capitol Road Program. We do our own quality assurance, and we use S M G for that service.
Okay, thank you. Next. Bear with me here.
Yeah, no problem.
This, these are all under BMO. So 30, there's $32.95 to Miller's Industrial. It says repair to roof. Is that some kind of supplies for the repair to roof, or what, what exactly?
I got it. I got my email here.
You do? Okay, Mr. Wilson, go ahead.
I'm just having to spend going there and probably working on the roof, trying to buy a new roof.
Sorry, Brad, I did email you late today, so you may not have saw my email.
Oh, no, I responded at 11:19.
Oh, okay.
We're good. Yeah, when the Public Works, they were getting ready for the holiday lights a little bit earlier, just pushing up the lights this year, the tree lighting and whatnot. So when they're on the roof, they identified some areas that need to be patched. So that one was actually, you see there are five or six tubes of silicone caulk for areas up on the roof that they identified that needed to be sealed going into the winter.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Next, 9998 sweatshirts under office supplies, wouldn't that go under uniforms?
Sure, yeah. The uniform account is 44021, office supplies is 44031. So just when they were keying it in, they just, they hit three instead of two. So we've already corrected that downstairs, so that one's all set to go.
Thank you. For some reason, I didn't get the email from you, so sorry.
No, no worries.
$510 Russo for gas, and my question was, don't we have our own gas pumps that we have gas that from?
$510, who's taking it? Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, we do have our own gas pumps. That was for the moto mix, to mix in with the gasoline to make two-cycle fuel for like the weed whackers, chainsaws, and some of the other smaller equipment that the field crews use to maintain the city properties.
Okay, thank you. And then $5.80 for UPS for executive session?
Yes, that was a return for an I T purchase. I know I T director's been kind of trying to tweak some things, technology, so that was actually a return of an item that was to be used in the executive session room for technology. So, a little bit of a wonky description, but, yeah, it was something for executive session, but it was an I T return.
Okay, thank you.
Anymore?
Nope, that's it.
Alderman Wesley, go ahead.
Page 191, ComEd Hookup Light Service for $1,198,93. Want to tell me that one?
Page 191?
191.
ComEd?
An old page.
Oh, yeah, 1199893.
Yep.
Go ahead, Mr. Lane.
Thank you, Mayor. We recently annexed Bryn Mawr Avenue, and as part of that project, we will be resurfacing the road out there and shifting it slightly to the south, and it necessitated removing a light pole that was out there. That, that is the disconnect fee for ComEd to perform that service.
That's over by the Nippon Building?
Correct.
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
And then the one right underneath that, the studio mounting for the wind sculptures for $375.
Go ahead, Mr. Lane.
Thank you, Mayor. That was for the ground mounts for the wind sculptures. When we removed them from Dunkley's Park, the ground mounts were set in concrete, so we needed new ones for the new locations.
Alderman Woods, go ahead.
Yeah, let's see, page, packet page 190, 11988, Wooddale Fire Protection District, C O C inspections, $2,000. Is that for the month? That's for the commercial occupancy certificates for the month?
Mr. Cage? We don't want you to feel left out.
Yeah, so I was trying to look for a question for you.
I appreciate it. It's not per month. Typically, we get, I want to say that the fire district kind of sends us invoices for the C O C inspections every, every two or three months. So it's not just one month.